With the recommendation outline on the amendment. The committee would then invited the public for written submissions. And almost hundred and tens of submissions were submitted to the committee. The committee then allowed those that want to do oral submissions to the committee. On the second and the third of February, we did invited all those that wanted to make oral submissions. We are giving this account so that you understand that these public hearings are important for yourselves. Because you might have not got opportunity for written submissions or oral submissions that were conducted previously. We are here to listen to your submissions. On how we can strengthen this legislation as directed by the Constitutional Court. What are going to appeal to you? Is that you are going to respect people or person who is going to make a submission? Whatever views she or he is going to express. Those people must do it freely. Or any other political party. They must do it freely. Our task is to listen and take notes. You are going to be allocated five minutes for your submission. And when we request you that your five minutes has lapsed, you must understand and appreciate that others still have to make submissions. We are allocated to start from ten o'clock until half past twelve or one. But you will be patient to all members of the community to make their submissions. The second request that this hall is small. Our security of parliament will advise us at a particular time, they know the method we use when we, the hall is full. So those that are outside, they must be patient. In fact, those that will be finishing submitting, they will be requested to exit the hall so that you allow others to come in. Is advised that already have been advised by the members of security. We have been doing this method throughout since we have started the public hearings. Because we must also observe COVID regulations. We are going to identify ten hands. And there are seats here, I think the security team will assist us. You raise your hand, we identify you, you come to the podium, make submission, and then you go to your seat. Thank you. Is that time that you are going to invite yourself to have an opportunity to talk to the portfolio committee? So you can use any language. Can I recognize hands for submissions? Oh, there's no in others, there's no submissions to be made? Oh, number one? Number two at the back? Number three? Yes, number three. Yeah. You can join the queue. So we have a... Three for now. Okay, you can start with. You can start, the first person?
With due respect, I do greet you.
Announce your name and say name because of recording. Thank you.
With due respect, my name is Stephen Mungad. From ward twenty. Kruger's Dock Mohale City. I don't know if I'm forward by asking this question. I want to ask, my question is regarding the RDP houses. Ever since I've been in the list. From nineteen ninety-six. Up to this day. I haven't received one. There are people who have enlisted their names after myself. That I know of. But they do have the RDP houses. That's my concern. Thank you.
Okay. If you have reali- If you have realized. We did not want to disrupt the gentleman. But I think we know that it's not the purpose of the meeting. But what he has raised is an important matter for a community member to raise. So want to caution if there are other issues outside the item of today. So we must not come and raise them here. But there are members of parliament here that are going to take note on the issue you have raised. And also have been advised that there's a, there are councillors here. Will refer your issue to, to them. So members here are requesting that let's stick to the issue which you have already pronounced or outlined as a process for today's meeting. Thank you. Next?
Thank you, Chairperson of the session. My name is Codile Livingston Mukpuli. I come from Mohale City, what, ten? I am here on behalf of the Economic Forum Fighters. Making my submission. You will pardon me, Chair. My catchet here, it's compromising me. Thank you. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC side and parliament. Over and above other political challenges this bill can bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy, is that it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process of people who wanted to use money to control individuals. That are not accountable to a collective but to themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest national general elections on the following conditions. Number one. The threshold for the nomination of a independent candidate must be not less than twenty thousand, and this must be people who are registered to vote. And the IEC must verify each one of those twenty thousand people that they appear on the IEC list of voters. These reasons we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower, we are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections, and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidates must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties, and it must not be refundable. As inclusion of independent candidates will come with costs. And people who wish to stand should not be taken, taking chances. Sorry. The last one. Those who contest as individual independent candidates and get higher votes than it required to get a, await a parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear opportunity and option to contest as a political party. We strongly discourage by-elections to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will be permanently in by-elections, I submit.
Thank, thank you. The veteran, you didn't capture your name proper, mister? Thank you. Next?
Thank you, program director. The name is Kenindo. I'm from ward fifteen here in Mohale City. First, it's a concern. When you stood there, program director, you gave us guidelines of how you go, you know, the today's program is going to be run. But most of us, we've just seen this bill now, and we had, I was of the view that you are going to take us briefly through it. As we're going through it, it's not going to make a sense, you know, for us just to read and go without you giving us, you know, proper guidance on this, but you've just given us how we're going to be running today's program. And then the second thing that I would like to ask, it's based on independent, you know, candidates that would be standing. What I would like to find out is that firstly, for the deposits that they are going to make, how is that going to be determined? Because I've heard the, you know, speaker that spoke before that there's a threshold that was, that was being proposed. So what I'd like to know is that in terms of the deposit of independence, how is that going to be, you know, done? And what is, what is going to give the guidelines in there? Thank you.
Next? We will respond to, to two issues that you raised, mister. We are just getting the parliamentary team of that deals with education. It's not a question that we can't respond. We just want to verify certain facts. Can I get the other hands? The first one? Number two at the back? Any other hand? Okay, you can proceed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairperson. I'm going to speak, Sisapen Sutu. In short. I respect you with the, the whole leadership. I just want to say I support this amendment. Because we are having a problem. Our elected councillors.
They are not much professional to lead us. This is the women and men, basa leadinga integrity.
They are not leading. It's men and women who are not leading with integrity.
Meetings. Most of times, so I did so too fairly because the political party, they produce the crooks leaders. If we check out all those are only professional people, but one and the next thing in the world. Oh, okay.
We've got a problem in our public meetings. When we look at the councillors that are leading us. They can't accommodate the people from the same world. Business people don't come to our meetings. Religious leadership don't attend. Because.
That one is very serious problem in our leadership, we are the councillor of Mohale. They don't know how to handle the professional people. So what I'm saying in short, it's better nowadays, maybe independent candidates from the stakeholders, but everybody naturally integrated, but that leader, our, our, our community, our education. The correct information where we're supposed to go. But we are sick and tired, the political party as a municipality, if it's in elections, we cry out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The veteran has a problem to capture names of individuals. So the gentleman, you did not say your name. I'm saying, yes. So if you don't say your name, you give the veteran a problem because he must capture your name.
Sorry, my name is Pito Tote.
Yes, thank you. So if you don't capture a name, you create problems for the recordings of the proceedings. Thank you, Mr. Pito.
Good morning. My name is Musimane Hapi, John Kubwaykai. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and the parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. The, this bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used as infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since, but since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest nationally general election on the following condition. The threshold for the nomination of the independent candidate must not be less than two thousand, twenty thousand. And this must be the people who are registered to vote, and the IEC must be able to verify the individual one by one. The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest, it is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national election, and that will be the impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties. And it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Those who contest as individual independent candidate and get higher vote than is required to get an, await a parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they will have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as political party. We strongly discourage by-election to replace independent candidate who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because of, because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in election. I thank you.
Thank you. Can you get hands? Number one? Number two? Number three? Number four? Yeah. Let's assist the gentleman, members. Because he raised a question that he only got the bill today. And he does not know what does it mean. And it's important that we just summarize the objective. If you have listened to other members who made submissions. They have already interacted with the amendment bill that is published. And will not able to take responsibility of those that did not make efforts to interact with the bill. But it's our responsibility to try to answer that question because it's important for purpose of clarity. So we are going to try to summarize it on four stages so that we properly understand. And want to apologize for, for, for you was, there is raised a matter in the meeting, so it's important that we, we try to respond to that. The first point is that the new nation movement. Took the president of the republic and parliament to court. To contest or to argue for the inclusion of independents or individuals to participate in the provincial and national election. And the modalities on how they think they want to argue if you go to their submissions of arguments. Which is an assignment, they, I will also test you to go and read their arguments. So Constitutional Court did let the Electoral Act nineteen seventy-three of nineteen ninety-eight unconcussion. And direct parliament to correct that legislation. So it means parliament must interact so that the legislation includes individuals to participate in the provincial and national elections. You know that in local government elections, even independent participate in their elections. So in parliament, there's a unit that deals with public education and workshop on any bill that goes to the public. So throughout the country, when we go to public, there's an advanced team that interact with the municipalities, councillors and the community to appraise them on the amendment that's going to be discussed or submitted by members of the community. So the committee of former affairs seeks to draw attention and input from stakeholders, political parties, NGOs, everyone, on how we can strengthen this legislation that the Constitutional Court has directed parliament to change. That's why in my stomach, we said, the former minister Valumosa's recommendation on two policies says the first policy that you can maintain the electoral system that we have been using post nineteen ninety-four and have a modality to include independents to participate. And secondly, we must have a constituency-based electoral system. So since we have been interacting on the public hearing, there were different views expressed. different views expressed. Even here, you can see that the last three speakers expressing different views, which were taking note as the committee. When we finish all the electoral public hearings, the committee will deliberate and write a report to parliament on the recommendation we think is best for this country.
Eh aisale, aisale ri simulu tseka eh kadiko pa noze tsasichaba. Ri le raba leba eh di ri le raba li di leba tu ba lo khoru banale mono efaro kani yakale bo. Kante roda meri tura roda kohore eh re tama isese re kona khoru re renke eh di kakau fela tenza ri di kriya ri di kopa ne. Re kona khoru re ri ri reporto.
Yeah, so I want just to make that eh summer so that we start on the right footing. Any view that you are going to express is going to be noted, and we're not going to have any decision as the, as, as, as the committee, as you have started, but we must thank you for raising that eh, that point eh, mister. Thanks, you can start.
Neke ro kobo toka tata khoru re ke tala se di tchazeu eh ebila ra kholay bo kaka hai le mo o tla kesi se di tchazeu. Rona re le komitee ya na kamukho kilika tala sa khoru re. Retohu mamela se li di buang, retohunka tseu ri di fidiste kopele ko parlamenti. Xaretohunka tswezo ma ba pele se u letohudi buang, retohudi fitisa di lehela ya lo di tsweelo talo.